Before they actually start.
Got trouble.
Yep.
But according to the order, please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is an open meeting of the Seward, Nebraska governing body. The city of Seward advised by the Nebraska Open Means Act in conducting business. A copy of the Nebraska Open Means Act is displayed on the north wall of this meeting room facility as required. Disclosure of meeting recording processes is posted in the meeting room. If participant's sign-in sheet is available for use by any citizen addressing the council. Representatives shall approach the podium, state their name and address for the clerk's record, and our asked-along remarks to five minutes. All remarks shall be directed to the mayor, who shall determine by no, any appropriate response shall be made. The city of Seward reserves the right to adjust the order of items on this agenda if necessary, and may elect to take action on any of the items listed. Please call the roll.
Logan.
Present.
Bass.
Here.
Cameron.
Here.
Fritz.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Singleton.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
Hand.
Here.
Here.
Item number one, consideration of approval of draft minutes of June 5th, 2018.
Move.
Okay.
Motion in a second, is there any discussion? Saying none, please register your votes. Please play the votes.
When you've ever welcome back campus Fritz Miller Singleton Schmidt hands, motion here.
Item two through six is a consent agenda.
Move.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, is there any discussion? Saying none, please register your votes. Please play the votes.
When you've ever welcome back campus Fritz Miller Singleton Schmidt hands, motion here.
Item number seven, a public hearing, 7:00 PM. Consideration of ordinance approving the final plat of Country Club Heights Fourth Edition, north end of Augusta Drive. Ed, did you want to take this one?
Certainly, Ray.
And there are two items, A and B, as well.
Good evening, council. This is a major subdivision application to develop and track the land, which is composed of a portion of Section 17 Township 11, north, range three east. The applicant for the subdivision, Steve Connor, the professional design firm is JEO Consulting Group. The subdivision involves ten single-family residential lots. The subject area is located in city limits, currently located in an R3 urban residential mixed density zoning district, and a single-family residential use type category in the future land use map. It will extend Augusta Drive to the north into a cul-de-sac. All proposed parcels conform to the R3 zoning, minimum lot width and square footage requirements, and there will be no change in zoning. The subdivision will involve relocating an existing city water main, extending other city utilities and new public streets. The developer has designed and plotted a future street to the west for future development. However, there is a substantial floodplain to the west, which would minimize the amount of land that could be developed in that area, as well as limit future ingress egress from the south or west for a second access point to the subdivision and area. City Streets Superintendent Mal Aldrich has commented about this issue, and city staff have communicated this with the developer. The planning and zoning department indicated they would like to consider having a future street platted with the subdivision that extends to the north to encourage future development in that direction. Other city utility department heads have the following comments. City Water, Wastewater Superintendent Tim Richdick reports he's requiring sanitary sewer manholes be sealed slash hard on the exterior to prevent intrusion of moisture and specific models of fire hydrants, which have been documented in the subdivision agreement. Electrical Superintendent Larry Luther reports he approves of the proposed plans. Park Rec Golf Corps Superintendent Bob Core reports that he approves of the land and Outlet One being donated in lieu of cash donation towards park improvements. Outlet One contains approximately thirteen hundred thirty square feet, and per the city's ULDO, the minimum amount of land required to be donated is eight hundred and seventy-one square feet. City Street Transportation Superintendent Noel Rogers reports that he approves of the proposed thirty-six inch storm sewer pipe design located at the south end of the new street. This was increased from the, I believe, eighteen inch storm sewer pipe initially proposed. The site improvement plans indicate a thirty-six HDPE plastic pipe. However, the hydraulic report indicated a thirty-six inch RCP concrete pipe. The plan shows the storm sewer pipe discharging to the west into the adjacent field with no plan designed for the storm water to be directed or channeled in any particular direction. The adjacent neighborhood to the south has a history of drainage issues, and no new drainage should be directed towards the south, rather west to the existing main drainage channel, which is on private property. The new city driving range is also being planned to relocate to this area. The planning department believes the utility easement should also be secured on the private property so that the city can maintain said drainage channels, and so the maintenance of the new driving range does not get negatively impacted by said drainage channels. The developer also submitted their hydraulic report, which indicates there will be no increase in storm water flow rates from pre-development to post-development. The city has provided the developer with the standard subdivision agreement and observation compliance agreement that has been used in the last few approved major subdivisions. The subdivision design conforms to the city's comprehensive plan and future land use map with a single-family residential use type. A notice of public hearing was published, mailed to neighboring property owners, and the subject property was posted. The planning commission met on June 11th, 2018, held a public hearing. The planning commission recommended approval of the final plat and recommended editing the subdivision agreement under number three, storm water management, to install the thirty-six inch HDPE plastic storm sewer pipe instead of the concrete RCP pipe, which Noel Aldrich approved.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the council at this time? Yeah, this is a vote of the planning commission.
unanimous.
Do you want, I'm sorry, go ahead, Alan.
Is the developer in agreement with everything that you had just mentioned?
To my knowledge, they are.
I'll take this opportunity then to open up the public comment portion. Would anyone from the public wish to comment on item number seven? Please, welcome.
Troy Johnston, JEO Consulting Group, Oahu, representing the developer. Again, I just obviously support the project. I think we've done everything that that staff has asked in terms of modifications and confirmations and such. So whether it be now during the public hearing or at the close of the public hearing, I'm certainly here to answer any questions that the council may have.
If they have questions, we'll call you back up.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to comment on item number seven? Saying no, and I will close the public comment portion of the public hearing. Does the council have any other questions or comments on this? Yes, Chris.
I just have a question. Ed, what you were reading here related to an easement on the private property piece, how does that work? I mean, I know we're going to be putting the driving range out there. I mean, does that happen with that lease agreement for the ground for the driving range? Or how does, how does, how would that easement work?
Well, in previous subdivisions, the owner of that land would have to grant that easement, sign an easement, and dedicate it to the city. So the city could maintain it without having to ask permission to go on private land.
Go ahead, you gonna say something?
Yeah.
What would the judge say?
I would just note, we're in the same issue of concern, not only with the fourth addition here, but with the other additions along Augusta. As the water traverses from east to west, they all drain out and go south and hook within the property. Let's call it, because it's owned by Mr. Spatansky, Spatansky's property. They all hook down, which this one, if it follows its normal route, would hook down into that same line predominantly. And so that's the concern, and there are no easements for any of those direct route crossings. So after they cross through our subdivisions, as they exit out, I don't believe, if I'm correct, Ed, everything we've looked at, there's no easement set aside.
Yeah, I was just curious how it works. I don't see why that would be on the developer. It's not his, it's not his land, and it was in here, so.
Yeah, and so ultimately, I think what you would do as the city to help protect the developments in the future, and it may be part of our water study, is to look to acquire those so that we can maintain them in perpetuity. And you'd have to negotiate that with the landowner then.
And I know he's already allowed us to do some cleanup out there.
Yes, he has. He's been very favorable to allowing us to do some work on the property.
Any other questions or comments?
Let's put another note. Pending your approval of this tonight, this will set into place the final design now of this subdivision, and also that roadway that we see coming to the west, right below the cul-de-sac. That roadway will dictate the alignment then, final alignment for going and looking at lease terms for the driving range. So we wanted to wait until you were done and set where the public access roadway would be, and that would help dictate to us the exact point upon which we'll go look at, working on the negotiation for a lease for that portion of the driving range.
And I failed to mention, the Outlet One land is being donated is for the purpose of the golf cart path.
Any other question?
Yep.
Any other, any other questions or comments? Thank you, Ed. Then we have seven A, is consideration of approval of the subdivision agreement for Country Club Heights Fourth Edition.
Move for approval.
Second.
Oh, do we do the ordinance? Should we do the ordinance first? Does it matter, Kelly? Should we do the ordinance first and then go do the A and B?
Yes.
That makes more sense, okay. So back up one second, let's go ahead and, a similar way to introduce the ordinance.
I'll introduce.
Okay. An ordinance to approve the plat entitled Country Club Heights Fourth Edition to the city of Seward, Seward County, Nebraska, as herein and after set forth, located north end of Augusta Drive, to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form to provide for a time when this ordinance shall take effect. The ordinance has been read by title and is designated as ordinance number 2018-15, and the title is hereby approved. I need a motion to dispense with statutory rules.
I move, second.
You have a motion in a second, is there any further discussion? Saying none, please register your votes. Please play the votes.
When you've ever welcome back campus Fritz Miller Singleton Schmidt hands, motion here.
Again, this is ordinance number 2018-15. Would anyone like to move that this ordinance be passed and adopted as read?
I move, sorry.
We have a motion in a second, is there any further discussion? Saying none, the question is, should ordinance number 2018-15 be finally passed and adopted? Did you register your votes? Please play the votes.
When you've ever welcome back campus Fritz Miller Singleton Schmidt hands, motion here.
This is the only ordinance for this evening, so anyone, final motion to make this ordinance a part of the front record?
So move.
Second.
Motion in a second, please register your votes. Please play the votes.
When you've ever welcome back campus Fritz Miller Singleton Schmidt hands, motion here.
Now, onto item seven A. This is again, consideration of approval of the subdivision agreement for Country Club Heights Fourth Edition.
Move for approval.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second, is there any further discussion? Saying none, please register your votes. Please play the votes.
When you've ever welcome back campus Fritz Miller Singleton Schmidt hands, motion here.
Item seven B, consideration of approval of a compliance agreement for Country Club Heights Fourth Edition.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, is there any further discussion? Saying none, please register your votes. Please play the votes.
When you've ever welcome back campus Fritz Miller Singleton Schmidt hands, motion here.
Alright, thank you. Next, item number eight, consideration for approval of industrial substation construction project. I believe Garrett is here as well. Would you please come forward?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Garrett Klein with Olson Associates. We have submitted the contract documents and specifications for a power transformer. This would be the major piece of equipment to go with the proposed industrial substation down south on Walker Road area. That substation was identified in the electric system long range plan to serve a couple of purposes. One, to be the primary source for any industrial development in the area, and two, to serve as a backup to three other substations where the city receives power now. One, the small amount of capacity that you have out at the MPED substation, and then the Tenico or Walker substation, and the third one is the Ash Street substation. The lead time on this kind of equipment is about thirty weeks still currently, so this is, this is the thing we got to get in place before even the design of the substation itself is completed. The capacity ratings of this unit are very similar to what was just went in at Fourteenth Street. The electric utility requested that the substation design capacity be very similar to that. Opinion of cost right now is about five hundred thousand dollars. We've been warned because of the political issues and tariffs and trade and all this that pricing could fluctuate. It hasn't yet, so we're hopeful that we can get in before anything funky happens in the commodities markets. But we're seeking tonight the council's approval to advertise the project. We've provided some proposed dates. If you have different ones, we're certainly open to changing those. We had proposed the bid opening in our Lincoln office. It's been, it's the city's preference to have them here, so that's a change that I know was requested, and that's certainly okay. And then the opening date, I think was July 24th.
Thanks, Garrett. And so we have four items, A, B, C, and D on this agenda. Are there any questions or comments for Garrett at this time? Yes, any? Yes, Chris?
These are the nature of where this is going and what's happening out there. This is the most aggressive we can be as far as getting things moving as quickly as possible?
Yes.
Very good.
Any other questions or comments? Did you want to add something?
I'd just note, a thanks to Garrett and Larry and his crew in the electric department. They really, really fast-tracked this for us due to the nature of the issues we have with the rail campus and wanting to get that thing moving as fast as possible and everything else. Within twenty-four hours, he was down here working to get this project started. And so I want to thank Garrett and Olson for all the work they've done getting us to this point, and hopefully we'll continue to work forward.
Anyone else? Now, we have item eight A, this is the acceptance and approval of bidding documents.
So move.
We need a motion to accept and approve the bidding documents. I have accepted. Is there any further discussion? Saying none, please register your votes. Please play the votes.
When you've ever welcome back campus Fritz Miller Singleton Schmidt hands, motion here.
Item eight B, this is acceptance of proposed advertisement date of June 21, 2018, or establishment of date. For approval.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, is there any discussion? Saying none, please register your votes. Please play the votes.
When you've ever welcome back campus Fritz Miller Singleton Schmidt hands, motion here.
Item C, acceptance of proposed bid opening date of July 24th, 2018, 2:00 PM. City of Seward, 537 Main Street, Seward, Nebraska.
So move. Second.
We have a motion in a second, is there any further discussion? Saying none, please register your votes. Please play the votes.
When you've ever welcome back campus Fritz Miller Singleton Schmidt hands, motion here.
And item eight D, acceptance and approval of publication of advertisement on June 27th, July 4th, and July 11th, 2018, in the Seward Independent.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, is there any further discussion? Saying none, please register your votes. Please play the votes.
When you've ever welcome back campus Fritz Miller Singleton Schmidt hands, motion here.
Thank you, Garrett.
Thank you.
Thank you, Garrett.
Item nine, consideration of approval of Seward County E911 interlocal budget. Greg, you want to start us off?
Yep, as we do every year in the budget process, the E911 interlocal budget comes before us, before it hits the county's budget as they lead up to July. And then we also are given the opportunity, along with Milford and the county itself, to give our guidance after it is reviewed and approved by the E911 interlocal. So we give our comment, and whether we voted up or down, if you remember like last year, and then ultimately it will go back for final approval. And so Barb Liska from our E911 is here, and so I can let her talk about a little, some of the highlights of what's in there, and then we can answer questions and provide some comment.
Good evening. Primarily, we have, I think the very top part, I think is pretty self-explanatory, salaries and what have you. The, there's maintenance agreements in there for radio system, the phone system, the 911 phone system. I believe you got, remember from last year, it's a hosted system with fourteen counties, soon to be sixteen. And so, and it's on seven-year projects, so really, the maintenance in there is minimal. The communications, a lot of the things went down, such as the communications equipment. Right now, I can't say that it's going to be that way every year, but because most of the equipment in the 911 center is new, I'm hoping that we can keep that down for another year or so. And then we are also looking at a new CAD system, computer dispatch, and we're looking, we're going to stay with the current one that we have, but it is end of life, but they'll support it, you know, do the maintenance, what have you, for the next few years. We are looking at a newer project, a newer product. We've been researching several different places. And so the sinking fund is one of the places, kind of like glorified, as you well know, I think, is a glorified savings account, which I hope to pay those costs out of that. As far as the rest of the budget is concerned, the overall budget itself is at a negative 1.19%. Now, I'm sure that the next question that's going to be asked is on the salaries. At the 911 board meeting, there was a lot of discussion. I can't say it was a heated discussion, but there was a lot of discussion. And what I had proposed was a two and a half percent increase in wages. Initially, I had tried to get it on the step and grade plan, graded step plan, and that didn't fly. And I can tell you right now that if I'd have brought it here, it had been brought for approval tonight, you would have said no. Because by the time I have my employees on the step plan from, they have experience from one to about fifteen to eighteen years' experience throughout all, eight of my dispatchers. I'm trying to get them on step plan based on their experience, but it's not working very well right now. So I went back to the square one that I really didn't care for, but I ended up wanting. I, like I said, I gave it, I started out with a two and a half percent. That didn't fly last year either. The commissioners have been talking about it, and they would prefer that I stay with the two percent that everybody else is doing. So I had to prepare another personnel sheet and budget. What you guys, what you have right now is the initial one that we approved at the time of our board meeting.
So the one we're showing the council now is 2.5, correct?
Correct. But things changed after I got to the commissioners. And they're kind of weighing right now to see what this council will do, how you're going to vote. I've already met with the city of Milford, and they did approve it with a two and a half percent. And so I guess it's in your ballpark. Do you have any questions for me?
All right. I know we discussed wages or salaries in quite length, like same as last year, but, you know, I think the commissioners got the point that they're going to lose dispatchers if they don't, if they don't come up, come up with a wage increase that complements their experience and time spent there. So I don't know that, you know, all we can do is, you know, pass the, you know, vote to pass the budget, but I think they do know that we're going to have to do something soon because it costs them to train new dispatchers continually.
I've been fortunate. I haven't had any turnover in fifteen months. And prior to that, I think by the one, who's there, about six years prior to that? And it is a lengthy process to go through the hiring process, go through the training, and work for twelve, fourteen, sixteen weeks. And then they're not really alone for a good year or better. Because you really, with everything that's coming at them these days, you don't really get a good grip on that job for about a year because there's so much involved in it right now. The technology moving every direction. It's, I mean, it's moving, hitting us all over. We will soon be looking at text to 911. And down the road yet, there's going to be video to 911. There's just a lot of things that are going to be coming down the pipe right now. And it's really hard to find somebody who can do the job and will stay at the job. But again, they have families to support too. And at the wage that they're proposing right now, I just keep hoping every night I go home, I don't have a resignation the next day. So anyway. Yes, there was a lot of discussion at that 911 board meeting, and I think they do understand it's just hard to keep the wages up.
But the real issue it sounds like is they're, the county is just doing a comparability study, correct?
Right, at which it is still, I, I'll be honest with you, I didn't get my budget completed till May 30th, whatever, the last day of May, we had the meeting. I did, but I'm bored because I've been waiting for the salary study. And I will tell you that that salary study still is not completed, so.
So really, I mean, as far as addressing the issue, it sounds like the comparability study needs to be completed, and then based on that data, a graded step needs to be created that would reflect with the comparability. And these are things that the county has to do, correct?
There is a graded step plan that they're using. It's, look, it's 2015, a little over two years. Yes, once they get all that put in place, and I don't know when that's going to take place. I mean, I don't know when the company is going to get all the stuff. I've not been privy to that information.
So whether it's a two percent or two and a half percent or some other number, I mean, it's really just a stopgap measure for the meantime until the data's been collected by the county and they have a, they reach a conclusion on what that's going to look like. Is that fair?
That would be correct, yeah.
Okay. Greg?
I attended the E911 meeting when they discussed the budget, and my feedback from the county representatives, the commissioners, was that the salary comparability study would not take effect for this fiscal year that you'll be considering here. And so the other question we had as members of E911, me not being a member, but being part of the conversation, was would they have some element of longevity in there? So we would have a step plan for the dispatchers. Well, that may adjust their minimum and maximum wages and steps in the middle, but are we still going to leave everybody on step four? Because that's the, that was the big spur for a lot of the members of E911, is the fact that right, currently right now, every base level dispatcher is paid exactly the same salary, whether they walked in yesterday or they've been there eighteen years. And this was the issue we discussed last year that caused heartache. And I point-blank asked the commissioners if the body, whether that's E911 or this body again, would make a recommendation to adjust those in any way or do anything differently than what's recommended by Barb, would they do it? Would they implement that change? And they explicitly said, no, we will not, again. So, as I said, I don't want to go chase this dog, this cat up the same tree and waste all of your guys' time and efforts having this. Because we had a very fruitful discussion, I think, about a year ago on that salary issue. And since they haven't done anything to, I mean, we were told that they were going to do a salary study to not complete, and so it's prolonged it for another year. And so that was a big issue. I know Dean was there, chairing the E911 board, and I think that's an accurate portrayal of what was said by a number of the representatives that were there.
So tonight, we're looking specifically at this budget, and specifically at this two percent and two and a half percent, since some of the communities have, like Milford used to, they approved the two and a half. So that's really the issue before us today, but this is going to be part of a bigger discussion because I'm not a real big fan of, you know, being on a board or a commission where we can give input and vote and it doesn't matter. So we may have to rethink that relationship moving forward at some point, but that's not the discussion for tonight. But that's how this piece fits into that discussion because I don't know what's, what's the point of having a strong feeling if, you know, if it doesn't matter. Turn that way for twenty years? Yeah, and I think it's time that we may have to revisit that relationship with this. But again, that's the discussion for another time, so.
Tonight, yes, Chris?
Well, my question, now, look at this budget as a whole. Obviously, there's multiple communities involved here. What's the city of Seward's portion of this?
Thirty-three percent.
And that's between us, the county, and Milford?
Yep.
Milford city residents and Seward city residents getting doubled up on city and county.
I wasn't here when the original percentages were broke out, but I wonder if they were trying to anticipate that in giving us thirty-three percent? And then Milford's such a small percentage.
But that's the case with any interlocal agreement.
Yeah. If it was.
We'll revisit those.
If it was, if it was fifty-fifty, then you would have more of a concern. And I want to say I've heard through the grapevine, and Councilman Singleton, you may remember this better than any, how they came up with those numbers in the first place. I don't know.
It's because of the size.
Based on anticipated call volume, I think.
Size and calls.
Yeah, so.
And they will not pay any more.
Another element, just as a frustration, especially from me and Bonnie's standpoint in getting the information, was that an element that's missing here, and Barb can correct me if I'm wrong, is ultimately what happens with the E-911 budget as it's administered by the county is if she, and we've seen her, we're close to the end of your fiscal year, aren't we, Barb?
Yes.
We're in like the last month.
When I set the budget out to you, you have it till July one to say yea or nay. But the fiscal year is July one through June thirty.
So you're closing out your current fiscal year, and I think based on your, and I think they're even in here, you were currently at the time of that meeting only at seventy-nine percent of your total budget. And so when she closes out this final month, we believe Barb will be under budget for this current fiscal year closing.
I was just figuring, we've been doing a lot of figures today, and I don't have them all put together yet, but I should be under.
Okay. What happens with that, if I'm correct, Barb, is that money stays with E-911 and is transferred as a cash reserve, basically, to start your next budget.
What the county clerk does is the 911 surcharge, the one dollar that you pay for your landline, she puts that money, which it used to be very high, but it isn't now, maybe, but I'll throw a figure of fifty thousand. I don't know if that's correct or not. And then she deducts that off the bottom line. And then she takes whatever I have left off of this current budget, and she will deduct that off of the bottom line again. And that's the number that your percentages are figured on. Once the budget, what's left out of this year's budget and the surcharge, dollar surcharge, that is, once that's deducted, then the percentages are made off of that balance, not the one that you see on the Q two.
So as you can see, that kind of, to try and give you a really accurate portrayal, if I tried to walk out of here tonight and tell you the city of Seward's going to pay X, I cannot do that. Because those figures are not provided to us when we're approving this, either at E-911 or here tonight, which is unfortunate.
But this represents the maximum number on the budget, so they don't go over budget, right? Our share would be. Yeah.
But again, I think it's, I mean, when we're preparing our budget, we provide you our estimated year-end expenditures so that you can see the cash flow as we move into the next fiscal year. And that's not provided to us by the county. This is not Barb's issue. It's the county and how they provide the information to us and give it to her. And so that's also slightly frustrating, because if we were walking into a seven hundred and eighteen thousand dollar budget and we had a hundred and fifty thousand dollars saved, that would be nice to know, but we do not know that, so. The last one, I just, because Barb brought it up at the E-911 meeting. Barb mentioned the landline funds, which are significantly depleting with the reduction of landlines. She also receives what's called the wireless funds, correct? The wireless funds are regulated and passed through the Public Service Commission. And Barb noted that, the first time for her understanding, is that those wireless funds are released now for not only equipment related to.
Phone equipment.
Phone equipment and things like that, but also for dispatchers' salaries. The first time we had heard about it was from Barb at that meeting. I did some subsequent digging at the PSC and talking to them, and it's actually been around since two thousand thirteen when they approved the rules and regs for the wireless funds, that they've allowed this. But they allow it based on a percentage that Barb gets from them every year. We determine what percentage of her calls come from wireless signals. Is that correct, Barb?
Correct.
And so last year was seventy-five, I think. This coming year, they'll tell her it's seventy-nine percent. And then seventy-nine percent of her baseline salaries for regular dispatchers, because they're the ones answering the wireless calls, we can take those wireless funds and put them to them. And the reason I bring that up is we, some members, I didn't, I'm not voting, I don't know up or down in regards to it, but at E-911, someone had asked whether we should be using those wireless funds to help supplement the budget of this to either go up and help with looking at longevity pays and to fill that gap if there was a fiscal issue, or to just bring the whole line item down, say, cut a hundred thousand out of it or fifty thousand and spread it equally in our percentages in the budget. And the county said basically the same thing to us, and you guys can tell me if I'm different. They said, no, we don't want to do that either. We don't think that's fair to the other county employees if we would supplement these dispatchers' wages and salaries with these additional special funds that only they can use for only a very specific reason, which is dispatching out wireless calls. And we were told, no, we won't allow that either. So I think that's an accurate portrayal of what was said, Dean, because it was asked by other members of E-911, so.
Which is why we may need to revisit this relationship or something. I had Chris first, then Alan.
I was going to say, you just said what I was going to say. Clearly, there's a whole host of issues that need to be addressed here and cleaned up. And we need to make that a priority from our standpoint to get it done. I mean, if the county's going to sit on stuff and not do things in a timely fashion, we can handle it from our side. As far as the budget that Barb has put together, I mean, even with the two and a half percent increase, she still has a negative total net budget moved to approve.
Okay. I'm going to get back to you in one second. We have a motion to approve. Is there a second? The motion and a second is ready for a discussion. Alan, did you want to add something?
Just to agree with you and Chris, and please let's have this discussion soon. My frustration with this was from last year, because we had the same discussion last year. And we didn't have the secondary part of that discussion, so let's do it as soon as we can. I know we're coming into budget, and that's a busy time, but as soon as we get that done, I'd like to get in here. I mean, this is kind of ridiculous that we're voting on something we have no vote on. So it's useless, though. Thank you.
So just to be clear, the motion is with a two and a half percent?
Yes.
It is, yeah, and that is your second. And, yeah, and I agree, I was under the impression that the comparability study would be available sooner. We could incorporate that into this discussion. That hasn't happened. So we did lag kind of a year behind in what I hoped to on that discussion. So we have a motion and a second is ready for a discussion.
I'll just add, I do know they're working on that because I got part of the survey. I mean, we were included in their survey, the company that's doing it. So I know they're working on it, but it sounds like it's not finished yet.
Yes, Greg.
And if I may be very brief on this, in regards to the discussion of the relationship, this body had tasked me and Kelly with working with the other county attorney, attorney from Milford, to, remember our interlocal agreement is like twelve different amendments and different sheets all over the place. And we wanted to, I did amalgamate all that together into a document, submitted it to the attorneys. And I'll just say it was like herding cats at that point, trying to get responses and directed efforts on it. And so that's lagged behind as well, but we've tried to use that as the starting point to start reevaluating interlocal, so.
Any other questions, your comments, any discussion? Seeing none?
One question.
Oh, yes, John?
So Barb, with the governor approving the state bank, is that going to affect your budget?
What bank?
There was a state radio, that email of the state. Is that going to affect the budget next year?
We're already on state radio.
Okay, okay. So it's not going to affect our will, then?
No, because it's already figured in there what the maintenance is going to be. We've already got a year into it. We're just about ready to flip the switch. And everybody, well, in fact, we are already. We're calling for us on the state radio.
Unless you have any other discussion, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
William, if ever welcome back, Captain Miller, single agent, and suppose bricks.
Thank you, Barb. Item number ten, consideration of refinancing rail site property acquisition with Union Bank. Greg?
Yes, looking at our thirty-acre site, the note on that one becomes due at the end of the month. Pursuant to our budget discussions back last fall in discussing the development of the thirty-acre site for the rail campus, is our recommendation start moving forward on that project. And so you've already approved bid documents and everything for the public works aspects of it. And so the last element of it is to finalize the payment of it or refinance, if that's what this body would like to do. But again, I think pursuant to our budget discussions last fall, our audit discussions with Terry and his review of some of our finances, my recommendation initially would be to go forth with the plan we have budgeted, which is to look at using utility funds, specifically with electrical funds, to pay off this portion of it. And then make a decision about whether you want to recoup those funds as you sell properties and put them back into the electrical fund. So we're looking for guidance on that. We did reconfirm, I think we're playing a little bit of phone tag with our financer on the current loan in regards to refinance terms, because there was some legal questions that popped up. We get answers to, but haven't got back with Union Bank in regards to looking for some refinance terms. But I wanted to get a feel from the body in regards to what you would like to do moving forward. Again, my recommendation would be, due to the substantial cash nature, I think we're holding about nine million dollars in cash reserves within the electrical fund. And we would like to move forward with the substation in this project out of the cash funds, because we're higher than most benchmarks. I was busy with Bonnie today. We did look at our bond holdings that we need to keep separate from bond service dollars, which are included into their own funds, just bond funds and reserves that we need to hold within our cash reserves. And I think that was limited by the agreements for the bonds at three hundred and sixty thousand. And we have nine million projected by the end of this budget year sitting in cash reserves. And so, didn't know what you guys want to do with that, but, so we're looking for some input tonight on what you would like to do.
Barry, if we didn't pay it back, if we just took the money out of the electric fund but did not pay it back, where would that money go then?
Oh.
Or we sold the lots?
I thought you meant did not pay the loan back. I was confused.
Or did not pay the fund back?
They would be mad at us for not paying that.
No, no, if we took the money and paid this.
Yes.
Out of the electric fund, and then we sold the lots and the money came back to the city, where, if it doesn't go back to the electric fund, where would it go? Just in the general fund?
It would, what we would do initially is if we paid it, is we would transfer from the electric fund, similar to what we did two budgets ago, where we did the four hundred thousand dollar transfer. Those cash reserve funds are to the discretion of the city council to transfer over both out of electric and water. Seward's different. And so, we would do exactly what you did. We would amend this year's budget before the end of the fiscal year. We would show that we had, and we talked about this during budget time, we'll show a direct transfer from the electric fund into the general fund of approximately, I can give you the number, it's going to be with interest four hundred and eighty-seven thousand eight hundred and sixty-two dollars, approximately. We would transfer that over into the general fund. We would pay it out of the general fund. As it's paid back, it would be paid back into the general fund. And then you would have to, through action of this body, transfer it back from the general fund over to the electric fund.
If we chose to do that.
If you chose to do that.
We would, we could use it as a reserve for future rail fight.
It wouldn't be like.
At that point, it's just like you did with the four hundred thousand. It's just gone, and then it comes back.
Go into like a specific fund for that.
Correct.
It would just be, we, our intention would be is that it would, we could use that anomaly towards the project moving forward, but it would, it would be co-meagled at that point within the budget, because that makes sense.
Any other questions or comments on that item?
Make the transfer. I recommend making a transfer.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, is that a motion or are we having a discussion?
Are you wanting a motion or are you just a discussion?
I thought you made a motion, I'm sorry.
I think it would be cleaner to do a motion if you're ready to do a motion.
Move the transfer four hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars.
Second.
From the electric fund. You're moving to pay off the.
Yeah, pay off.
Pay off.
We have a motion and a second is ready for a discussion.
Was that elements I need to know?
Seeing no other discussion, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
William, if ever welcome back, Captain Fitz, Miller, single agent, and suppose bricks.
Item eleven, consideration of updated job description for accounting assistant, budget administrator. Change to finance director, treasurer, human, did you want to take this?
Yes. The job description for the accounting assistant budget administrator was first developed in two thousand fourteen, and then it was modified in two thousand sixteen, however, the position, even though advertised, was never filled. So after review of the essential duties and what we currently need today, the city hall office administration needs, and looking into the future of some succession planning for staff, and again, needs of the city, it's recommended that there be some significant changes to that job description. A copy of it is in that packet. The proposed description reports directly to the city administrator, I think prior reported to the city clerk position, and would have all finance responsibilities. The job description also proposes splitting the clerk treasurer duties. And the revised description would oversee the chart of account conversion, which we approved a few meetings ago, manage all securities, prepare all the financial reports, and prepare the city's budget. When the position is filled, then additional changes will be proposed to current job descriptions and positions for the other city hall office positions, and a realignment of duties will occur over time and through succession.
Any questions or comments on item eleven? Yes, Sid?
A question. So by state law, we're required to have a clerk, treasurer, or a clerk and a treasurer. Have to have a clerk and treasurer. And then Bonnie, did I understand you correctly in saying that the duties of both the clerk and the treasurer would be split between this person and you?
There would be the clerk position and the new position would be the treasurer.
So you'd have a separate clerk and a treasurer. Okay.
We would both be doing those duties.
That was my question, okay. Because right now, it's clerk slash treasurer, but in this case, it'd be a clerk and a treasurer.
Any other questions or comments? Do you want to take a motion to approve?
Move for approval.
Take a motion and a second is ready for a discussion. Seeing none, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
William, if ever welcome back, Captain Fitz, Miller, single agent, and suppose bricks.
Item twelve, city measures report.
If you have any questions, you can provide those on to me. I'll note them. On the golf course, Councilman Camphon, you had the request in regards to animals. We did check, there were no definitive rules and regulations. I had assigned the day after then for Cody Harold, our golf superintendent, to be.